I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone that's here this evening and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore, trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigington.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, good to see everyone. Okay, trustee DeVore is on the way. Mark Walton is absent tonight, but in his, filling in for him is Kate Carter with Miller Hall &amp; Drake, so welcome. We would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on July 19th, 2022. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item five is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on August 2nd, 2022. I'd ask for a motion to approve that set of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A second? Okay, moved and second to approve that set of minutes. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone here tonight would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone here tonight to address the board? Going once, going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. We're at old business. Any old business come for the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first is approval of pedal bus license to Pedal Party LLC. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the pedal bus license to Pedal Party LLC.
And a second?
Second.
Trustee DeVore, please set that up.
Yes, so the pedal bus license that we had issued previously was non-transferable, but the pedal bus has sold now to Pedal Party LLC. They have already paid their fee to obtain the license, but it is only guaranteed by board approval, so I believe Bryson's here today to see that we would give them approval to continue to run the pedal bus under the new ownership.
Thank you. Before we take questions, Bryson, if you don't mind, would you come forward, please? You're not only an investor in the pedal bus, but you doing a whole lot in Peoria Heights, and we appreciate that, so mind telling us your plans?
Well, I mean, it's been challenging with the pedal bus this year. You know, Jody and Diana, they were able to do it themselves, so we had to like find a few people that were, you know, fun, that would be able to do it, responsible, had to work with Jake Davenport to figure out where we could store it. Our plans for that is to fully remodel it. You can see we've kind of done pieces of it, so next year it's going to come out with a bang, and it's going to be much, you know, I mean, we had some challenges on trying to figure it out, but next year it's going to be awesome.
Questions, trustees, discussion?
So the original agreement about it being exclusive to Peoria Heights, is that remaining the same as well? Because I know Jody and Diane had requested that we not allow any other pedal buses. Is that still in the agreement?
We only approved for us to only have one license, so if someone came to us with another one, we would have to go back and determine as a board if we were going to extend the number of licenses similar to how we do with a little license.
Right.
Did we also make it exclusive to the village of Peoria Heights so that it could not operate in Peoria?
We did.
Yeah, and so that's just a carryover to this.
Yeah, I don't think the agreement would change at all.
You know, so speaking to that, we do, I've been talking with Dylan downtown, we do want to put another pedal bus in the warehouse district and just have it be Heights and warehouse only in this area, and maybe even expanding it to pedal like on the river. So, I mean, I would kind of object to being like only for the Heights. I mean, I feel like the Heights is probably going to get the most traffic anyway with the warehouse district not picking up as much steam, but they're going to put $40 million on Main Street, and you know, we're going to cross-promote both at the same time.
I think we asked for that because they asked that we wouldn't allow anyone else.
Right.
Like, so it wasn't that we asked for that for any other purpose other than like, hey, if you would like us to not give another license, then we would expect this in return. So if we allowed, if we took that out, then we would just be allowed to give additional licenses out.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so we, how does that original agreement work?
It'd have to be amended then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer to remove the exclusive clause personally.
Okay. Does it take board action? I'm sure.
Oh, well, we need a motion to amend the agreement first.
Do you want to make that motion, trustee Weisenberg?
Yeah, I move to amend the pedal bus license agreement to remove the exclusive amendment. I can't remember what it is, I don't have it in front of me. I don't think we have the agreement in front of us that we had last time.
I'll second it.
So to strike, strike the exclusive agreement clause, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, on the amendment, any discussion on the amendment?
So, so what we're voting on, just so that I'm clear, we're dropping exclusivity mutually?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Which would allow Mr. Smith to operate elsewhere and would allow us to?
Issue another license to another LLC or any other company.
Anyone else on the amendment? Madam Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Okay, we're back to the main motion as amended. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so when you operate the pedal bus, do you follow all traffic signs and regulations? Because I know the previous owner had a tendency to roll past stop signs.
I mean, if I'm personally driving it, yes. That's what we train the drivers, you know, we tell them to abide by the, you know, normal rules and regulations of the road. So I can't say without like seeing it personally. I've witnessed a few of our drivers, you know, when I'm driving past and they seem to be, but we can double down on that in case anyone has a complaint that they weren't.
Okay. Anyone else?
And, and I would honestly still like to have exclusivity with Peoria Heights where no one could bring in another pedal bus, because I feel like that branch to the warehouse district is going to draw back people to Peoria Heights. I don't know if that's even doable.
I wouldn't be in support of it unless you were, if you, unless you were exclusive to us, because I don't see how it would be fair to the village of Peoria Heights to say, we're not going to allow anyone to operate a pedal bus, but you can go to Peoria or Morton and what would we get out of that agreement?
Because we would be doing them both simultaneously, having, we'd have two buses, so one would be down in the city of Peoria and one would be only solely for here.
Right. I mean, I, Bryson, I don't know, from an entrepreneur's perspective, I mean, is the market flooded after one pedal bus? I mean, at some point, let's just be candid, right? I mean, I, I don't know if they're going to be, how many LLCs are going to come in and say, oh, there's already a pedal bus company here on the street?
Sure.
I mean, so, I, I get the, you know, we like it in writing, but let's, the reality of the situation is, as an entrepreneur, if you see there's a pedal bus company already cruising down Prospect, are you going to go there? I don't know.
Right. I'm just crossing the Ts.
Yeah.
Also, for us to issue a license, it has to take full board approval, right? So they would, it would be on a public agenda, they would have to come to us during public comments. You could also speak your case why we shouldn't approve that, so it's not like someone else is just going to come in, walk upstairs, get a license. It will be a whole public hearing before that happens as well.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee, trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye. All right, that passes. Good luck, and I hope you don't mind if, would you have a few minutes to tell us some of the other projects you're doing here in the Heights? You're doing a lot, I know.
Sure, yeah. I mean, so we bought the BFL building, and we'll be moving over there hopefully by the end of the year, you know, doing some renovations, not sure on that timeline to be exact. We'll be there, you know, indefinitely. Essentially, I don't want to move out of the Heights, and my goal is to move to the second floor and open up a disc golf shop, you know, here in the Heights. We already own two other disc golf shops, one in Normal and one in East Peoria, which I would love to do some sort of disc golf area here in the Heights. That brings in a lot of money. Nate Heinold with, the host of the Letchstone Open, and we had 2,200 people come to disc golf, you know, brought a million dollars in, in money into the city. I would love to do something like that down the road, so that would be in the building at storefront at some point. Let's see, you know, eventually, my uncle, you know, I'm trying to, you know, set something up with him to acquire Emo's. That seems like that's like a 99% chance at this moment, so that would be down the road. I mean, I'm from the Heights originally. I lived half here, half in the South End, and I want to be here forever and try to bring as many businesses here as I can.
I know that, we're proud of you and the real estate business. I know you've got a lot going on there as well, so thanks for coming back to the Heights and conducting business. We really appreciate having you here.
Anything else?
That's everything, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one, two, three, four resolutions that are improvements to Tower Park. The first is approval of a sign marquee renovation by Mid Illinois Companies in the amount of $3,850. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve $3,850 to Mid Illinois Companies for the work on the sign marquee out here on Prospect.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Gett.
Okay, well, pretty much cut and dry here. They're going to, the sign needs to be worked on, they're going to fix it up and replace the existing plexiglass and the frame holding it all together, install a new plexiglass and frame, fire wash it, the limestone base, and we're going to supply the water and electricity, and it's for $3,850, I think is a good price. If anybody else has anything they want to say on this?
Any questions? Dustin, you want to set up all the, help?
Yeah, just briefly, trustee Gett, what I'll do, last meeting we talked about all these expenses, and the board asked me to put them on the agenda for approval pending how we were going to pay for them all. So just a quick update, the expenses totaled $151,111. $60,000 of that will be coming out of our general fund, and the rest are BDD and TIF-eligible expenses. So I just want to know, you want to know that information before you voted on it?
Thank you.
So we got to go through and approve each one of these individually, correct?
We're going to do that.
Okay, so.
Anyone else on the sign marquee?
Chief, sorry, Mr. Mayor, so the 60 grand out of general fund, we were already budgeted for this, so this was a line item we foresaw coming, and we're good on.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, if you're ready for the question, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Tower Park Pavilion and Restroom painting by Mid Illinois Companies in the amount of $21,450. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
$21,000? Oh, I didn't get a total here, okay. I make a motion to approve $21,450 to be awarded to Mid Illinois Companies for work on the main pavilion.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Gett.
Well, it just needs, this is just basic touch-up work, you know, taking care of the building, it needs to be railing, you know, needs to be cleaned up and painted. They're going to, okay, they're going to put a semi-gloss coating on the metal railings, metal posts, metal beams, hollow metal door and frames on main pavilion for $21,450. Any questions?
Just note that also includes the small bathroom, octagon over here is also going to be touched up and painted.
Interior and exterior?
Just the exterior.
Okay.
And it's, it's been 20 years or more since, you know, this has all been freshened up.
But that won't affect the mural, right?
No, 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 they won't mess with it.
Anyone else? If you're ready for the question, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Tower Park Fountain lighting installation by Laser Electric in the amount of $62,500. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve $62,500.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, take it away.
They're, basically, we talked about this last meetings, they are going to put in lights and everything, that will be different colors, so we don't have to go through the bother of adding ink and everything to, to, for the fountain to be different colors and everything, they can, this will be done electronically with the lights, and I think it'll be a much nicer effect. And $62,500 for all this electrical work is pretty reasonable, I think.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Questions?
So this, does this represent a cost savings with the man-hours, and, I mean, ultimately, over the lifetime of this, we probably receive a return on our investment?
Yeah, I believe the die itself is annually about a $1,200 expense, if I was, if I remember right.
Yeah. Depending on how many times we change.
Not to mention the manpower, and also with the lights, it's something we can use 12 months out of the year, not just during operating, fountain operating hours, we can use this during the winter, too.
Excellent. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of the Observation Tower flat roof repair by Western Specialty Contractors in the amount of $63,311. Trustee Gett, I would ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve $63,311 to Western Specialty Contractors.
Second, please.
Second.
All right. Go ahead, please.
Okay, this has been sorely been really in need of repair for a while. We've had boards that were hanging down, you go underneath it, you can look up through it and see the skylight, sky and everything. I mean, a few years ago, we said it should be fixed, but it didn't get taken care of, and mother nature and all her little critters have a tendency to make things worse. They don't, they're not in there working like they show in cartoons, so I think this is long overdue, we need to get this done. I'm glad to see they're taking care of the tongue-in-groove part, because that'll make it, I mean, you can't just patch over it, and that's, that's an essential part of this park up here, so I am really 100% behind this project, so.
Thank you. Hearing none, madam clerk.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, trustee Gett. Next, we would be at an update on the fire department. Administrator Sutton?
Before I get into that, mayor, just a quick update, on June 9th, we had a random inspection from MSHA, and I just received the results from that. We had zero violations, which is very rare, but I just wanted to commend Chief Thompson and his staff for what a, what a nice job. I just read the report, and very impressive, so thank you for that. So, as far as the fire department update, just concluded the interview process last week. I'm still working through a few different issues, I'm meeting with IML tomorrow, they're sending down a representative to meet with me to go over some retirement issues, some questions I have. As you can imagine, with, with five different candidates, we have five different options for retirement, so I'm getting the best answer I can for the village to see what that's going to cost us. I hope to have this process wrapped up by next Monday and have us a candidate, so we had really good candidates, we narrowed it down to top five, and all five of them are very impressive, so I should, I would have an update for the board at the next meeting as far as candidate and contract.
And you have some news on, from Senator Kaler?
Oh, I do, yes. Talked to Senator Kaler over the weekend, and if you remember me mentioning the $250,000 grant that we were getting, we did confirm that, we should receive that, I would say, in the next month, so it's good news. And if you remember, what we're going to use that money for, some of the money for, is update our body cameras, which we've had in service for eight years already. There's some new generations that I think would be very effective for our police department, also the automated plate readers and all that, all that stuff is very expensive, but we still might have a little bit money left over, but I have some different options for that, I'll bring it to the board. But anyway, good news, got confirmation on that, and so we should be discussing that in the next few weeks.
And you want to make the announcement on the zoning board special meeting and the reason why?
Yes, so last night, the zoning board meeting, Wayne Aldrich did a great job with the representatives from Bex and the dispensary, everything went smooth, it was a preliminary meeting, the, we are, we are having a scheduled special meeting September 7th for Bex, and then that will come to the board September 20th for final approval. So, even though it's been delayed a little bit, Wayne has done an outstanding job working with them and iDOT getting this thing. I know we're behind a few months, but it's starting to fast-track now, so very excited about that addition to the village. So I'm excited for them to be here on the 20th to give you an overview of kind of what we're looking at on Ward Drive, so.
So would you agree that two reasons are driving the special meeting? One, there wasn't any opposition to the project last night, and two, they want to get going on construction, we don't want to hold them back, is that?
Correct, there wasn't any opposition. At the zoning meeting last night, as I said, it went very smooth. As far as construction, yes, delaying them until October really put them back, so they were, they requested that we try to have a special meeting, and our zoning board is very accommodating, so I want to thank them for that, too. They got that put together as long as, as far, and so did Sarah getting everything put together and the legal notices, so it's been a team effort today, but we got, we got it moving.
Thanks for those updates. We would be at miscellaneous business, anyone have any miscellaneous?
I do, mayor. Down on Route 29 were the central transport businesses. I continuously get emails from residents who live on Riverview Court about the excessive noise. Central Transport has done a lot of construction here lately, I believe they're doing construction throughout the night or some, or something, but they've removed a lot of trees, and as you can imagine, trees are a pretty good barrier with noise, so without all that tree, without all those trees and all that vegetation, the noise of their business, their 24-hour business is disturbing several of the residents on Riverview Court.
Trucks are idling, or?
I'm not sure what they do overnight, but they say it's worse than it's ever been, and these residents have lived on that, in that neighborhood for like 30-some years, so I'm pretty sure it's because they've removed all the vegetation, so there's not as much blocking the sound between that business and the neighborhood. And I know several meetings ago, we made some additional changes to a business that operates, I think, off Monita, so I wasn't sure if there was anything on the zoning side that we can do to control the noise throughout the night.
I'm going to ask council, council, you want to jump in on that? And you may not be familiar with the area and the business, but what options do we have as far as when it comes to noise and restrictions?
Well, we'll have to take a look at specifically what regulations are in the code, see if there's anything within the code itself as is to enforce this, and if so, we can learn that, if not, we can look to alternative.
I did speak with those residents on River Court, actually, today, Riverview Court, and I think their complaint was, one, you're right, the, the amount of traffic has doubled, you know, recently, and I know that, the complaints are, I think, twofold. One, if it's construction throughout the night, I think we have, we have, we have some direction on that through our noise ordinance, but as for just normal operation, I know they operate 24/7, but if it's construction, I think we, we have, you know, we have an avenue there. But I think just the sheer traffic, the doubling of traffic recently is their major concern, but I'm really not sure how we can, we can affect that at all. But as far as the noise ordinance, if there's construction going on during the night, I think we can, we can handle that, but I'm not sure if it's, if it's operational, then that's, it's zoned, you know, what it's zoned, so that's something we'd have to visit or ask council for an opinion on.
So, when they took the trees down, that didn't leave a privacy fence or anything up there to kind of help absorb the sound, or?
No.
I mean, it's just wide open?
Yeah, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but there used to be a thick brush across, running down 29, that you couldn't even see Central Transport. If you didn't know it was there, you would never know it was there, because there was, and now that they've removed all that, not only is the noise horrible, but when they're moving trucks, like you can't even see on Route 29, that's how thick the dust is. One, it's a safety issue, I don't know how they get away with that. I mean, who would be responsible if there was a dust storm on 29? I mean, that's a dangerous road as it is, reduce visibility to zero, and it's, it's, I mean, it looks nice, they put in some concrete, concrete where there was gravel or dirt, it looks better, but the amount of dust that it creates is a hazard.
I think, I think they are under heavy construction, I mean.
I agree.
They're putting in, it's going to be all concrete when they're done.
Right.
Obviously, dust is from the construction, that's not going to be a lasting thing, I don't believe.
Right.
I mean, they're putting a lot of.
Right, I don't know, you know, they should be, in my opinion, if they know that they create this hazard, they should be, they should be watering down the drive or something to reduce that dust, because it is like you're in the middle of a desert, it's thick.
Well, here's what I'd like to do, will you make sure that Dustin knows all of the issues that you have with the property? We'll have him meet with code enforcement and meet with attorney Walton, and then we'll report back on this at the next meeting, what options are, is that okay?
That's perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, mayor, it'd be more of a legal, I think, under code enforcement, there won't be anything that we have any, any options on, but I will say that, you know, we'll meet with, talk to legal and see if they have any, something we can come up with as far as maintenance, I guess that would be.
Maintenance, yeah. Aside from noise, which I mentioned, you can take care of from a contractor's perspective, we'll have to take a look and see.
Okay.
It's hard if they're properly zoned, it's hard to monitor operations at this point, but we can take a look.
Thank you. We'll put, madam clerk, let me make sure we put that on the agenda for the next meeting and update.
Yes, will do.
Just one other thing, mayor, just an update for the board, since last meeting, we had a resident come up and give an opinion about, you know, our EMS and fire service, I just, I did follow up with AMT as far as response time and calls, and it's, as I stated last meeting, response times are great. as I stated last meeting, response times are great. Just, I, I double-checked and just to reiterate and get my own peace of mind that, you know, again, our relationship with AMT is outstanding and as far as our call load and response times are amazing, so just to follow up to what was said last meeting.
Question about AMT, have they ever approached us about paying for their service? Because I know at several other communities, I think Streeter and Pekin.
No.
They've floated fees for their service.
Never have.
Chief, one question on timeline as far as the fire, so, are we, and this maybe goes to Chief Thompson as well, are we okay with, I mean, I know we have to wait for the Springfield or Chicago to get back to us on the retirement issue, but are we okay as far as timeline is concerned for the department, for coverage?
Well, I, we've, as I've stated before, I've fast-tracked this process, obviously it would be more drawn out in a normal setting, but with the timeline, the chief, you know, handed to us last meeting, I have expedited this, but it still is going to take time. And the reason why, you know, it's taken a little bit longer because, one, the, the retirement issue is key and I need the answers from municipality before I can move forward with a contract and offer somebody this job. So, I would say Monday I should have everything I need. Now, I will, I'll let Chief Thompson speak to answer that question as far as coverage, but it's my understanding that we will be under the old, I should say, status when we call for a service and nobody comes, then it actually, it, it will go down the list through the Mavis box and whoever else is available, so, I mean, that's.
So, in essence, we're, we're going to be relying on the police department for fire-type calls, the police is going to have to call for Peoria, because right now, we, we, I don't have anybody during the day here at all. I'm trying to get days covered as best I can, but I've already taken two weeks vacation to cover, I would again, but I don't have that much more vacation left to, to get it done.
So, so my question is, you know, and we heard about the ZBA stepping up and holding a special meeting, do we ourselves need to do that?
This doesn't require board approval, Chief Sutton has the authority to make the hire. Hire one, as soon as he finds a candidate, offers a job and then it's accepted.
Okay. Right, well, looking, I think we're going to be under the same timeline because we have given this individual, have to give a two-week notice, by the time that happens, I think it'll hit really right at our next meeting, so I think we've, you know, we're on the right track.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other miscellaneous or any committee chair?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Goff.
I had the opportunity to be around Public Works when they were operating the new valve exercising machine trailer that we just bought, and it's an absolutely wonderful piece of equipment, I was very impressed and I, I understand that, you know, we approve things and don't always get to see them. I really wish that a machine like that would have been available when I started working here, which obviously it wouldn't be, but the data that it can gather, the virtually hands-free operation, the benefit to the water system is all, it's, it's all very worth it. And I think that, especially with the data that that thing will gather as it operates, is going to be invaluable as far as setting up our priorities on valve replacement or things along those lines, so it was very impressive and I'm, I'm very glad that we got that machine.
Thank you, trustee Goff. Any other miscellaneous?
I can give a couple of updates. Fountain currently being painted, painting should be finished by Friday, it's going to dry, hope to have water in it next week. It will not be lighted until the lights are put in, but we will have the fountain working potentially next week. And the aggregate over at Centennial Building is replaced, it's hardening now, but I don't know if anybody's been over there. The match is quite impressive, I mean, it looks original, I was quite surprised. And then also, we'll be striping all the streets the next couple of days, if anybody's out driving, watch out for our guys, take it easy, going to try and get all the lines all painted up.
Thank you for that update. Any other miscellaneous? We'll move on to payment of the bills, I'd make, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.